I felt this was a nice job.
We have a quorum. I know Mr. Nezarella won't be here tonight. And so the meeting is being taped by Area 58. We'll open the Board of Selectment meeting right now. But then what we're going to do is take a motion to go into executive session. And I don't have a wording here.
So it'll be to open?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, okay. So we will vote, we're all moved to go into executive session in the Town Administrator's Office pursuant to Mass General Laws Chapter 30A, Section 21a3.
Second.
Wait, I'm not done yet.
Okay, go ahead. When you're done, I'll second it. Just that was my dress rehearsal, ready to go.
To discuss the following: Moore's Brothers to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the Chair, so declares, which I do.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right. We have to do a roll call. Mr. Seeling?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno, I vote yes. So we'll come back at approximately 6 o'clock. Yep, okay, so we'll go back into public session. We completed our executive session. And the first thing, we have an appointment at 6:05 with Lori Costa-Klein, who's not able to be here, but you'll stand in for her. Do you want to come on up to the microphone for just a minute? And don't be afraid, we just want to make sure we know what you're looking for. So if you could just tell us your name?
Sure, I'm Lana Eldridge. I'm one of the coordinators for Halifax Pride. And we just requested to be on the agenda so that we are able to secure dates for our next year's large event. We're hoping for June 15th with a rain date of the 16th.
Pam, are we open those days?
Yep.
Yep. So again, it would be dependent upon us getting all of our permits and applications. And this will be our third bigger event, so we know the process now. So we were just coming in to, like I said, secure the date because it's such a crazy time of year between parties and weddings and all of that stuff. We'd like to get our food vendors and our craft vendors and all of our entertainment, you know, booked ahead of time so that we're not scrambling at the last minute.
Okay, sure. Good. So they're asking for permission to use the town hall on the 15th with a rain date of the 16th. Any questions from the board?
No, no, I wish you luck. I wish you good weather.
Thank you, us too. Last year was a little tough.
A little bit, I see.
It was, it was still a wonderful event and lots of people still came out. But we decided this year we needed to have the option to have a rain date because of last year.
I really think it's the town hall green because everything on the town hall green last summer was rained out.
I think it was the summer in general, everything was really rained out.
Every weekend.
So fingers crossed Mother Nature.
They're selling umbrellas.
Yeah, we're hoping for better weather this year.
All right, so I'll take a motion to allow the Pride event for June 15th with a rain date of 16th.
I will make a motion to okay the Halifax Pride event for June 15th with a rain date of June 16th, 2024.
I second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lana.
I should have mentioned at the beginning that Mr. Nezarella had another appointment. He can't be here tonight.
Did we mention where Area 58?
I did that in the beginning.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so that's it for our public hearing, or public meeting, I mean appointments, rather. So we can just go right down the agenda to approval of the minutes.
Sure. So these minutes, Pam, we're going to hold off, is that what you said?
Yeah, you can get them from one computer to another. There's a glitch.
Okay, so we're going to hold off on those.
Yeah.
We're going to jump down to the approval of the warrants and commitments. I move to affirm approval of the following warrant and commitments. Vendor warrant number 48 for $103,536.31. Ambulance commitments from 11/13/23 to 11/19/23 for $66,394.17. And ambulance commitments 11/20/23 to 11/26/23 for $31,608.06.
Second, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
All right, I move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 49 for $467,267.25. Vendor warrant number 50 for $389,329.44. Withholding warrant number 51 for $164,263.69. And the mobile home park fee, it's number 12, for $5,160.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So I see Jim Walters is here. I didn't realize that you are, I was looking for, does he have a talent bank thing or no?
Yeah, it should be in there.
Okay. Put my hand on it.
Should be.
At the very end?
Right there.
I got it. Okay. Okay, so we have a request or an application from Mr. Walters to be on the Information Technology and Communication Advisory Committee, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I mean, we all know, Jim, he's a very valuable member of our government, volunteers a lot, pays a lot of attention to everything, so I'd be glad to give him any job he wants.
Well, I don't know about any job. Careful. Yeah. No, again, Jim, you've already demonstrated, I know you haven't been here too, too long in town, but you've already demonstrated that you're willing to roll up the sleeves and help. So I appreciate that very, very much. And I would be thrilled to have you jump onto this committee.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Jim Wal, James Walters, to the Information Technology and Communication Advisory Committee.
A hardy second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I know.
Thank you again for all your work. It's much appreciated.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, so going back in, I don't see anybody else here. Well, let's see, I think Darlene's here for the GATRA.
Yes.
All right, so why don't we jump to that?
So I can give you a little bit of a preface on that.
Sure.
So one of the things in Darlene and I's conversations has been the idea of joining GATRA, the Regional Transit Authority. So we met with Stacy, who is here from GATRA, who will be able to give a presentation. But, you know, we vetted the process. Darlene and I both feel this is a good move for the Town of Halifax at this point. As you'll see kind of from what Stacy goes over, it's only a net benefit to the community, specifically monetarily. But there's also room down the road to expand services. So with that, I think Stacy kind of has an overview that she can provide and.
That'd be great. Come on down, Stacy.
The one person who's got her, and I did a little background in case anybody wasn't clear about.
This is, let me, Stacy Forte?
Stacy Forte from GATRA, yep, right around at our Town Regional Transit Authority.
GATRA is your forte?
Yes.
Sorry.
Unfortunately, it is. I've been there a long time. So I know we've been down this road a couple times. I don't know if anybody else remembers. But we, Town Administrator had reached out to me with Darlene to reinvigorate the process. I think the last time was 2020 on we talked. So we're a regional transit authority with one of the 15 outside of the MBTA that provide public transportation throughout the state of Massachusetts. Back in 2006, they amended the laws to allow communities that are paying for MBTA service but not receiving any transportation to join their local regional transit authority and have that money divert to their transportation in town. So when that happened, GATRA jumped very fast from 17 communities, and now we are up to 29, 30, something like that. What we would propose and what we look to do is we work with each community to see what they need, what works for them. We don't press any of our, you know, we're not going to come in and say, well, you need X, this, this, this. It looks like from what I see outside, what you're running through the Council on Aging is very typical of what we see in a lot of our smaller communities, and it works. And we, I don't mess with that because I think that's a good way to help your community. What we would offer is that you would bill us for the services being provided, and we would pay you to provide them. Using your assessment that goes to the T would be transferred to the Regional Transit Authority line. So if you look at your cherry sheet, you would be under, you would move that, you know, up to how much you use would come down to the local assessment line for your Regional Transit Authority instead of going to the MBTA. For not really any.
I guess if you can explain, first of all, in case we are being recorded, so just in case anybody doesn't know what GATRA is.
Yes.
Do you want to start with that?
Yeah, so sorry, yep, so we're a regional transit authority. We were formed on Mass General Laws Chapter 161V. We receive state and federal funding to provide public transit in our district, which is large at this point. We have, in your area nearby is Pembroke, Hanover, Carver, Kingston, those are all GATRA communities. We go out as far as Bellingham and Medway on the other side, go down Wareham, we're kind of everywhere. So our state federal funds, we also get local assessments, and we provide public transportation. So anything from fixed route buses, large buses that anybody can take, to mayor response services, such as what the Council on Aging already provides for people with disabilities or over the age of 60. We can offer backup for training, and if the town down the road wants more services, we have a lot of, you know, background in those areas that we can help with.
Okay. And do you have a thought about, I'm sure you've talked to Darlene and all about this, but what would it look like in Halifax?
I would, you know, my personal opinion, and just like I said, talking to Darlene, is even just to start, it would be no difference. Would be them running the service. You would sign a contract with GATRA once you were joined, and then we would just, you would invoice, the town would invoice us for the services provided, and we would pay you up to kind of that. Right now, I pulled your cherry sheet for FY '24, it's like $56,000. So right around there, we could.
So are you talking about like the shuttle services that we, the senior shuttles, that kind of thing?
Yes.
I see, okay. And those people that work on that, like the drivers now, would they become GATRA employees?
No.
They would be our people.
Yes.
We would be a contractor to you.
Yes.
Okay.
You sign a contract under GATRA, it's a standard contract that we have with all councils on aging. It's the same language, which is just basically because there's some federal funding mixed in and so, so there's just, there's training requirements, which Darlene said they already do, which I assumed they did. And anytime you get a vehicle, or if you've got, if you've got funding for Mass DRT, you would have to do those things anyway. This way, we give you kind of a support backup. We have staff that can guide you and help you and, you know, if you have issues with things. So the contract, I did send to Town Administrator to review. I don't know if you had any questions. It's pretty straightforward, nothing fancy.
Yeah, you also wouldn't need to approve the contract tonight.
No.
Council's looked at it, and I've looked at it, there's no concerns. But basically, tonight, we wanted to have Stacy in, give you an overview. And if you were to move forward, the process would be that you'd vote to request to join GATRA. And then we'd follow up, we'd send a letter to GATRA, that they would have to bring it before their advisory committee to accept. And then we can go back, approve the contract, and move forward with the actual process. This is kind of the beginning steps. The key here is really no change in service unless we want, unless we want it to. It's on us, it's our decision. At this point, it's really reverting. Right now, we're assessed like $56,710 this past year of our state aid goes to the MBTA. Going forward, that would go to GATRA. And then for all of our services that we provide transportation, we would invoice GATRA, and then we'd get that money back. So we're really just end up with us having more funding available.
So what's the, I should know the answer to this, and I don't. What's the MBTA assessment meant for?
It's just part of our state assessments. We have, so we have several assessments, and the towns are either assessed, and it goes to the local transit authority, like GATRA, there's Serta, 15 others, or it'll go to the MBTA. But unfortunately, they don't provide any sort of services to us.
So, well, they did the training, I suppose that's why we got the assessment. But no, that doesn't count?
No, that's it. They don't provide any sort of other bus service or dial-a-ride or anything.
Ah, okay, okay.
Yeah, so instead of, in my simple view of it, so instead of us giving the MBTA $56,000, we would give you guys our $56,000, and then bill you guys back for the services.
Right, and we wouldn't, and I hate to, I know it sounds a little bit like we're taking them, we wouldn't, we would only, what you used of that money is what you would, so we kind of get it on the back end, we don't get it in the front, we get it again off the assessment sheet. So it would just be that you would bill us, we would pay you, and then at the end of the year, when we do our financials, they go up to the state.
Would this mean we wouldn't get the MBTA assessment at all then?
So we never actually see the money. It actually comes out of our state aid.
Okay.
So the state comes and says, okay, we're going to give you this much state aid, and then you have this much, you have this much in assessments, and it's, you know, the mosquito control, it's the planning council, MBTA. So that money would just be reverted to GATRA instead, and then we would bill them up to that amount. So if we had, if it cost us $40,000 in the year to operate the transportation for the seniors and disabled, we would get up to that $40,000 back. So anything up to the assessment amount.
Okay.
What if, what if we're assessed, and I don't know if this is an easy answer, but what if we're assessed a certain amount, but we don't bill to that amount? What, what happens?
That would go to the T. I mean, it's still, I believe it's still kind of, they need, they get some, some stuff.
Gotcha.
Up until they don't.
That goes back to the MBTA?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't found it in other communities, so we do have, I kind of did the same thing where I did the tap-toe when they changed this, where I was like, at some point, you know, but they, even in communities with stations, it's just been.
So I guess it would be beneficial for us to, to come up with services to get as close as we can to that assessment as possible?
I mean, I would say based on my knowledge of other systems in the area and what she's running, you're probably right there.
Pretty close.
If not, or honestly. So I wouldn't think that there would need to be an increase.
Can you then tell me, like, other than, other than this money transfer part of it, what, what does GATRA do for us?
Yeah. So we do provide, you know, like I said, we have some knowledge base, we have, you know, maybe in the future, we'd have some software to provide. Like we have a lot of things that we can do, we can help with if you wanted to expand transportation. At some point, there could be more funds. As we increase service area, we could get more state funds, state assistant funds that we could add to the pot, basically. We also help with vehicle replacement. So once your vehicles get to a replacement level, we apply for vehicles every year, plus purchase or above from the state, and then we kind of disperse them through our service area. And we do maintenance. Right now, it's a little tough out here, but we are building a Wareham facility. So we would be able to maintain the vehicles that, you know, that were GATRA vehicles out of Wareham. If that time came, once the vehicle started to hit useful life, we could, we could work with you guys on getting new vehicles. So that's basically what we do. We're really just here to, we don't make any money, so I'm not selling you anything, we're just here to help. We're just here to provide transportation. And, you know, and I am a firm believer in the Council on Aging model in smaller communities. I think especially if they're already providing for people with disabilities that are under 60, which Darlene said they are, and that's, to me, is a good model. It's, you know, your customers, you know, the people in their town, you know what your town needs. And I'm not a person that would come in and take that away, unless you wanted to. There are towns that come in and say, look, we don't want to provide, we're done, we can't, and we would help you with that, too.
Okay.
Yeah, it just seems like we would, the chance of getting more bang for our assessment buck, it seems like, is more with GATRA than with the MBTA.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm all for it, then.
Do you have something to want to say? No?
Come on up.
Darlene Regan, Council on Aging Director, Halifax Council on Aging Director. I brought, I wanted to bring GATRA forward back in 2021 when I came on board because of the fact of the aging, you know, the vans themselves. And also, too, that it's a, transportation is a vital part of our Halifax community here. We do provide a great deal of our, that's pretty much a lot of our resources in terms of what we do for the seniors and a person with a disability. And I just saw this as a viable way to look at the maintenance of the vehicles going forward. We will maintain the drivers themselves, we do have great support with that in terms of three drivers. They all support one another in terms of time off and so on, and so it's, it's a positive. And they're all certified, and they would provide extra certification. That is a good thing for us as a community, as a town as well, in terms of liability. So I saw these as a lot of positives, and asked that we look at it. And of course, with the new leadership, of course, we opened it up again to look at it. So I can't see that there would be any kind of negativity, but more so of a positive thing for the community and for the town.
Who does the maintenance on the vehicles now? Do the highway department do them?
Yes. But I mean, it shifts that responsibility on to, you know, reputable organization that is able to take that responsibility and understand the vans. They're very complex in terms of the lifts and so on that need to be maintained. Management is almost like a property manager for, you know, a townhouse or condo association. But it's, it's a positive thing because, of course, they're well-versed and trained in the area. And if this Wareham facility does become available, right now it's in Taunton?
We're in Taunton right now. Wareham will be, we're looking at two years. We fast-track, but we're going to be building in two years.
But we could, at least in the interim, we would continue to service themself, but then we could actually bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, invoice GATRA for that work, correct?
Yes, yep, that would be your contract.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to say. But, you know, it's, we would maintain the, you know, looking for drivers and maintaining the drivers here, so on our payroll.
Not to rehash old stuff, but just curious, and it doesn't matter to this situation, but why, curious why it didn't get off the ground in 2021, because to me, it seems very much like a no-brainer.
Right, it's true. We did just, you know, go into discussing it, but it was just at the peak, and then Charlie Seeling had left.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so it was in November, October, November, we talked.
Gotcha.
Yep, August, yeah. So I have all the information sheets, if you need to see them, but that's when we discussed it, and then, you know, he made that transition, yep.
Okay.
So, yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, good, thank you. Anything else you want to tell us about it before we?
I think that's it. I mean, if, you know, I'm here to answer any questions. I would just say, reiterate that we are more of a local community model, so we would work with you guys on what you wanted. We don't, so if you in the future want to come to us and say, we have a need for this, and we have a need for that, we would work with you on providing that as well. And that's pretty much it. The next, the six steps, which I sent to Town Administrator, where that you would vote, we would send us, and send us a letter, we would vote as a board, and then once you join, the Town of Halifax would have a seat on our advisory board as well, with a weighted vote based on your assessment. And then, yeah, we can sign, we can go through the contract. I come out and do a training with staff, go through the contract, step by step. And, yeah, well, just.
Thank you.
I know I have a question in the back, the town accountant.
Who's that lady?
Sandy Nolan, Town Accountant. I just have a question as far as the assessment. So will the assessment still be taken out of our state aid on a monthly basis? And instead of going to MBTA, the state will just send it to GATRA?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so it's not something that we have to now send to GATRA?
Correct.
It will, the state will send it to GATRA. And then we would bill you for, you said for expenses, so that includes the drivers' wages?
Yes. It'll be in your contract, so you would set your contract up and say, look, this is what we're going to pay for and how much, and then you would bill us monthly.
Okay.
And it's usually driver salary and wages, maintenance, fuel, if you need, if you wanted to.
Does that include fringe benefits like health insurance? It does? All right, thank you.
Okay, so just tell us again, what we, we have to vote to send a letter?
You would vote to request to join GATRA.
Okay, all right. We have any other questions, comments, anything?
No, and just for the record, too, I know Plimpton and Kingston are both part of GATRA as well, they're both GATRA.
And just recently joining Kingston's County Community for a long time, yeah.
Yep. All right, so I'll make them, oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Are there any more recent annual reports on the GATRA site besides 2019? It's the last one.
I've had some booming around, but yeah, I know, we have to get those up.
So there's three classes of ridership, right?
Yes.
So there's, one's called demand services, and then another's called healthcare, something?
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
What are, what are they? So how does that benefit our seniors?
Absolutely. So you would just be demand, demand response is what we consider if you, you know, you're booking a ride and calling ahead, and that's available mostly to people who are over the age of 60 or have a disability. The health services is actually just, we are a broker for the state, for half of the state, for PT1 transportation, so for mass health and things like that. So that wouldn't, I mean, you already, if you already have that, it just depends on who you work for, it might not even be us, I'm not really sure if we cover this one for, for PT1. And then we have the fixed route ridership, which is the buses that you'll see right around the schedule, yeah.
So your fixed route shows trending down 2017, 2018, 2019. Is that still the case?
Fixed, well, we're coming out of COVID still, but we're, a lot of our area is more rural, so we don't see a huge fixed route. And your fixed route rarely does well in Abbott, Taunton, places like that, but we have more rural areas. So now we're out in Franklin Runtham, we do more demand service out there. So those are the numbers once we get any more, of course, I feel see that's kind of a flip, where we, you know, our demand numbers are a little bit higher. Our fixed route is, you know.
Right, thank you, that's all.
Okay, so no other comments or questions? Then I will make a motion that we request to join GATRA.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Hope we get in.
Thanks, Stacy. We're a nice community. Pull some strings for us, would you?
All right, let's see here. So we have a change in manager on Mon Ponset Events. Let me see if I have that. Okay. No one's here for this, right?
They are not.
Okay. So the Lake House, who's the new manager?
Jonathan Sapphire is the new manager.
All right. Okay, and, all right, so the Mon Ponset Events LLC, also known as the Lake House, want to change the manager to Jonathan Sapphire. I think, isn't he an owner?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I don't know of any reason not to.
This is just the first step, and it'll go into ADCC.
Yeah, I'll say tomorrow.
Okay, I mean, if we, we knew there was some reason not to, I suppose we wouldn't, but I don't see any reason not to.
No, I don't as well.
Okay, so we have a motion to authorize the change in manager from, to Mr. Sapphire?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is signed or initialled?
You can sign right here, just to be up to the drawing.
Okay.
All right. Okay, now interim municipal agreement for public health excellence grant.
So you may recall, we had Bob Ballerian a couple of months ago, our health agent, to discuss the public health excellence grant, which he has been spearheading and the town of Halifax is the host to. So there's, it basically is a grant from the state that provides for significant funding to several towns in and around us to provide expanded health services, basically additional inspections, anything beyond the minimum, the state will fund through this grant so you can provide more services through the Board of Health. So it consists of us, Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Middleborough, and Terrainham. This is just the actual agreement, the intermunicipal agreement, because we're all part of this grant and we're the hosts, we need all of the boards of Selectman and Board of Health to approve this. So they have all done that pending Bridgewater, which I believe is supposed to be approving theirs tonight, but we want to, we need to get this in before the end of the year. So we just needed the board to approve the agreement. Council's reviewed it, no concerns. I've reviewed it, no concerns, pretty standard boilerplate agreement.
Is this the first time we're actually signing this agreement or is this something that's been done before?
I'm not sure there was actually an agreement in place before. We've been the host, but with the new round of funding, one of the requirements is to have the agreement in place.
Okay, very good. Any questions?
No, excited to do it.
Good. Do you want to make the motion?
Sure.
How's that?
Sure, I appreciate it. I will make a motion to approve the interim municipal agreement for the public health excellence grant.
I second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Just, just me, this? All right. Okay, so we did that. Pine Street Intersection Improvements.
So this came about at the request of Selectman Seelig, some recent additional accidents there. As you know, this was an intersection of concern in the past, so the, we had requested that a road safety audit be completed by Old Colony Planning Council. They did complete that, that the results were shared with the board at the time. The board voted to have me inquire on funding for the recommendations. I did meet with Charles Sumner of Old Colony Planning Council. He recommended a few different grant opportunities, none of them really aligned with the recommendations in the report right now. There may be some future opportunities, but considering the recent accidents, I wanted to bring this forward again for the board to discuss. It may be something to consider to go after capital funding to move forward with some of these recommendations. If we were able to secure grant funding in the meantime, we would obviously do that. We would still pursue that grant funding, but without the funding, obviously, we can't move forward with any of these recommendations. And you may recall, the number one recommendation was really to have the town complete an intersection control evaluation study, which requires an engineering consultant to develop operational improvements and alternatives. So that's probably our best bet to move forward. We don't want to implement anything without really having an engineer look at it and make recommendations. That would probably be to the tune of about $30,000 to have an engineer look at that. So that's, just wanted to bring it up again. If that's something the board wants to move forward with, I can create a capital request before our capital planning committee.
I mean, we've done the study, we've, we've gotten the feedback, and I don't think $30,000 is too big of an ask to, to at least get the ball rolling on doing something with this intersection.
I will note a couple of the grants that I inquired about, there's funding available for implementation and construction, but they want you, the town, to fund the design and engineering.
Sure.
So this may help us also in pursuing further grant dollars if we have a study, an engineering report completed.
At least we have control over it, I suppose, is one, one plus. Chief, are you here for this or are you just interested?
Well, actually, I was here for the 605 meeting and I just figured I'd hang out.
Well, that's kind of sad, actually.
If you have any questions, I mean, obviously, you guys know the, as soon as they reopened Pine Street, we've had a series of accidents. They had one, a very bad one, and we're very fortunate that it wasn't more serious than it was. Again, like I mentioned, when we, we had Old Colony do the study, you know, the major, majority of the accidents, driver, driver, you know, not making attention, driver error, this is exactly what happened here. I, this sort of, one of the drivers who wiped the stop sign, you know, I'm not sure if the person, it wasn't the area, he realized the stop sign, that the road entered into a, you know, a major roadway and got struck by the other vehicle, caused the collision. So obviously, I spoken to Steve about it after the accident and I had recommended, but again, obviously, any recommendations we make, probably would make sense to have an engineer do it and pay the money, because I'm sure they're a lot smarter than we are, was some sort of rubble strips, like they do on the highway at the edge of the roadway. So if you, you know, start to be a rock, you know, people that fall asleep, it wakes you up, or this way at least, you're given a warning, somebody's coming up, slow down. And then, you know, we have the flashing stop sign. I don't know, one of the recommendations was the flashing yellow light, but that, again, needed the engineering and then we're talking about $100,000 for that one light. So, you know, I mean, it's, and then, you know, somebody else had recommended, they just make it a one-way street, you know, coming in the other way, because this way it's a little more visible, the stop sign. And then, you know, and then, but again, I don't know if we need something, you know, if Steve can do that, the board can do that, I'm not sure, you know, process that, make a two-way street, a one-way street, you know, in that town, so that's just.
Or even if we should, right. Frank?
Frank Johnson, Ellen Street. I went through, I've gone through there a couple times since it opened up in the evenings and those flashing lights are not working on those stop signs, so I'd request that minimum, we take a look at that, the highway fire, we're never in charge of those lights. I don't know, since the battery's gone dead and the cells on them or what's going, but they are solar-based.
I thought they were solar, yeah.
I know a lot of times this time of year, though, we don't get a ton of light, a lot of times.
The problem with the, one of the speed signs on 106, and we actually had to move it from where it was, because it just wasn't giving us.
Kind of sunlight.
From the foliage, it could be, that could be a problem. Actually, the cell itself, the battery cell, that, I, you know, maybe have Steve take a look at that.
Yeah, it could be very little batteries, because they don't last for a long time at all. Or it could be the, you know, just have a little panel, could be an issue with the panel as well. And then the other thing that I would kind of recommend, maybe if you're coming up to 106 there on Pine from the new bridge, maybe sign saying stop ahead or something of that nature, you know.
I think there is one on Pine Street.
I don't know, but I know Steve did say that there was a sign there.
Yeah.
I don't know.
If you're coming Pine Street towards 106, there is one.
Okay, so that's what I, that's what I suggested, after that sign, you know, the rubble strips and, you know, but again, that's because I don't, you know.
You're right, right.
But definitely want to take a look at the flashing signs, because they haven't worked yet the last couple of nights that I've gone through there, they haven't been on. But like I said, it could be the panel, it could be the batteries, or it could be lack of sunshine this time of year as well.
It is interesting that most of the crashes at that intersection happen around this time of year. Like, happen in the fall, Thanksgiving, kind of October time, so another thing to think about, too.
And it's a good line of sight there.
Yeah.
It's better than a line of sight on Old Plymouth coming on the 106.
Sure.
If you're coming off Ellen Street and cut across over down Pine and take a lap, the line of sight's a heck of a lot better.
Yeah.
But like you say, your guy from the last one the other night, just went on through the, through the traffic stop sign, yeah, right through, yeah. So there's nothing much to do about that. But like you say, the rubble strips wouldn't make a difference. And also, maybe if it was flashing, might help, too.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Can I just ask, Cody, so let's say we, we push for the $30,000, what, what happens?
Say approximately $30,000.
Approximately, all right, I'll hold you to it. But what, what's next steps from, after that?
Well, have to be approved at town meeting and then we would go out and, because it's under $50,000, we'd seek three proposals from different engineering firms and go with the most, the lowest qualified proposal.
So it would be on the warrant?
Yeah, so, so essentially, we're, we're still leaving this up to the town to decide and at least now we're giving us an opportunity to even do it by getting it on the warrant.
Have to go through the capital planning committee first.
Correct. I don't want to jump over.
And then as long as it gets through them, it would be on the warrant.
Sure.
As part of the capital plan.
I'm all in favor?
Yeah, I am as well.
Okay, you need a motion or just?
No, I don't think so. I mean, you'll see the, the capital items will get back to you anyways. I just wanted to bring it up and see if it's something you wanted to pursue.
You can, I guess you can accurately say that the board is in favor of it. And also, if we ask the highway surveyor to look at that sign?
Yes, I have made note of that.
Okay, good. Update time. MBTA action plan, we're still working on that on the zoning bylaw committee?
We are, yeah. So I spoke with the consultant yesterday. He's still running some modeling and it's taking a little longer than he anticipated, but he's hoping to have something to us sometime late this week, early next week of what we had discussed in the last bylaw committee meeting, zoning bylaw review committee meeting. No new updates on Morse Brothers, no new updates for training, boards and committees. As far as general updates, as of yesterday, we were officially fully staffed in town, so we do not have.
We have, we looking for a train? Oh, that's not ready yet.
Yeah, the chief's working on that. But as far as our kind of general government operations, we have no unfilled positions.
Fantastic.
So completely staffed for the first time, at least since I've been here.
Been a long, a lot earlier than that. So it's great news. Fantastic.
So you'll see the great hall has been decorated, so thank you to Sandy Nolan for kind of spearheading that with our staff. The team came together today during the lunch hour to decorate the room in preparation for holidays in Halifax, so we are excited for that. With the new staff onboard, Ed Bailey, our building commissioner, started yesterday. He's settling in very nicely, has met all of the staff, has already really jumped in, hit the ground running, planning annual inspections for next week with the fire chief, processing permits, he's, he's settling in nicely. And then our conservation agent, which was approved at the past town meeting, also started yesterday. His name is Ford Wykoff and he will be here Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 2:00, and assisting the conservation commission. He's also settling in very nicely, hitting the ground running.
Outstanding.
Yeah, that's good.
So good.
Long took a year, right?
Yeah. And that is pretty much it.
Okay, so anything else to come before the board?
No, just, just a plug for holidays in Halifax on Saturday.
Do we have a fireworks show coming?
We will have fireworks this year, so excited. And I think the committee's done a great job and I think it's going to be one for the, one for the history books. I think it's going to be a great night. I don't want to mention the weather, because as of right now.
Good.
Right, we won't say it, but it, thumbs up right now, so I don't want to jinx us, but.
Looks dry.
Exactly. We'll take chilly, it's not even going to be chilly, but they're saying dry, so.
Chili's good.
A little misty last year.
Yeah. It should be fantastic. We have a, we're doing something a little new this year. We're doing a tree lighting ceremony and we have a mystery tree lighter this year. So.
Mystery person.
A person, this person knows who they are. I hope they know who they are. And, and I think the idea is to kind of use our tree lighting ceremony going forward as a way to pay thanks to somebody in the town. And I love the idea of maybe opening it up throughout the year for people to nominate who they'd like to see light the tree every year. I think this year's candidate is an outstanding choice.